Good to see everyone. Um.
And, okay, well, you're already sending, so I'll throw the floor over to you. But I might ask Marina to join in as well, so, um, because that way I can see all of you, even though I I can see most of you. We all sit for that.
Yeah.
Take a little. What is it you feel comfortable doing? Beautiful night, so here's what I feel comfortable doing. Introducing an exciting topic because we are so close. Um, it's a culmination of the work that we've been doing for all like over a year. And uh, so tonight is an exciting night. Um, what we want to talk to uh, tonight, guys, the next step in all of the information that we've already given you about the Capitol Facility Advisory Committee and the long-range plan recommendation. Want to take you on a little bit of a trip. Here's where it started. Uh, you approved the twenty-one, twenty-seven Capitol Facility Plan back in twenty-twenty-one. We were at Maple Line. I remember this vividly because I was trying to present wearing a mask and like uh, sucking in air uh, all the time. And then you also hired Matt um, to conduct a needs assessment that Marina was a real pivotal part in. Then, part of this whole picture and part of this whole plan uh, included your approval of the feedback. Which was just a great group, uh, brilliant thinkers in the room, uh, many of you in this room attended those meetings. Um, and what I appreciate about our board is that you were also very involved in those meetings. Uh, it's not that you attended all of them, you didn't need to, but you each attended what you felt like you needed to in order to be involved and to get the information that you needed. We began that in March twenty-twenty-three, Marina, how many did we have, about thirty-ish?
Approximately thirty-ish.
And we had a nice variety players at that table. Um, and then what we just most recently did is we presented our current reality and their recommendations. And if you remember, um, this slide, this is our current reality. You remember your initial reaction to that slide? Uh, right, Paul, that laugh kind of says it all, right? Um, but I just want to keep this in front of you and remind you that this is the reality in our buildings. I mean, you walk into Bonnie Lake High School and there are kids in flex areas and hallways everywhere. They don't have space at, to Holy Heights, we have two fifth grade classrooms and a library. So the need and uh, the reality is, it's, it's very real. And then we also presented what it would cost to meet the needs of that um, current reality. And you're gonna, Roger, you're freaking me out over there, just trying to make sure. Okay. Um. You're gonna see that we uh, took off one project, the Lake Bridge Middle, Middle School queuing, and Marina, you want to talk about that real quick?
Yeah. Previously, we began working with the hydrogeologists to really dive into what the reality was of the Lake Bridge Middle School site. We all knew that water moves through that site and it moves in interesting ways in that site. Uh, the problem is that the deeper that we dug, the less surety that we had about whether we could mitigate that water in such a way that we could successfully build. Um, and there, there comes a point where you say we can pour more money into this and not get a different result than what we're getting from our testing. Um, we simulated water flow, we did enough, had so many test pits on that site, so many test wells. And um, our experts just could not give us an answer that said, yes, built. So uh, we just had to recommend not moving forward with the project.
So all of this up until now, you've seen, uh, minus taking up the Lake Bridge queuing project, so we're at about seven-hundred-and-thirty-two million. And all of this is really based on the Capitol Facility Advisory Recommendation and the work that's been done, the hours that have been um, poured into this proposal. Which took us then to, just a couple of weeks ago when Mark Pressing was here, um, he presented the financial information so that you could get an idea of what does seven-hundred-and-thirty-two million dollars look like? And if you remember, this is what he presented to the board. The projected cost per month, per year, the new tax rate with the new bonds. Again, all information that you've already seen. Which takes us to today. So you are here. And really, this is what we're asking um, from the board tonight. Do we uh, do we as a district do nothing based on this recommendation? Do we consider bringing you a proposal to run a bond in November twenty-twenty-four? Or do we run a bond in February twenty-twenty-five? And uh, this is what your purpose is tonight. We're not asking for a decision by any means, but what we do need is direction on which way to move. Because again, we're, I mean, we're like standing right there um, at the cross or at the T, even though that's kind of why. Um, it's like, are we gonna just stand there and keep doing nothing? Or do we run, and if we do, when? I mean, do we proceed drafting a resolution? And if we do, do we include all the projects that you've seen, the entire recommendation? Is there additional information you need? We've been at this a while, um, and again, you've all done a very thoughtful, thorough job in really figuring this out with us, um, and partnering with us in this uh, journey, but this is where we're at. Um, we know what we need, we know how much it costs. We know that this uh, need can be met with a recommendation. So again, it's, what do we do? And a couple of things to remember with a bond, especially uh, I need you to really think about this and consider this. This word, yeah, Kelly, maybe you can help me with this. Well, mine requires sixty percent percent of the tests, right? We know that they're tough to beat, uh, no question, no. We can run a bond twice in one calendar year, but we ran in November this year. Um, great. Next year, we can run twice. Here's what I want to spend just a little bit of time over, is we need to have a good understanding of the soul validation. So. This is all still all. Here it is. Here's the turnout for voters. And I don't need you to pay attention to whether we pass or fail, but this is the turnout for voters for the Capitol election, two thousand and fifteen, twenty-two. You know, it's like about, you know, eighty-five hundred, eleven, that's, it's, we're in that range, so far, pretty consistent, I mean, we, you know, jumped a little bit, but this is our Capitol election turnout. This was the turnout for November twenty-twenty presidential election. What do you know? That's a good question, but.
Three times more.
So. If you want to run. Sure. Keep this in mind. If you want to run, and you'll remember, what I had. If you want to run in November twenty-twenty-four, you're gonna validate based on the November twenty-twenty-three general election. So that's how we validate. About thirty-six thousand registered voters, ten thousand approximately voted. You do the formula times forty percent. In November twenty-twenty-four, we would need four thousand and approximately voters to validate a piece of eight. No problem validating in November twenty-twenty-four. For instance, other challenges, but not that issue. If you want to run in any of the special elections, general election in twenty-twenty-five. You're gonna have to validate based on the twenty-twenty-four presidential election. So if we just look at like, the numbers. About thirty-six thousand voters, I increased it just a little bit, right? If about fifty thousand vote, which is about an eighty-five percent turnout, similar to the twenty-twenty. Do the formula, we're gonna need about twelve thousand more. This is what we just did in February. Right, Bill's got that look like, yep.
Yeah.
Not even possible. But you would do, I mean, if it would change and add a new layer to this election where we need people to vote. And then you hope that they're the right, the right voter. You don't need twenty-six hundred no votes. So, when you're thinking about standing there at that road and you're like, do we go this way, do we go this way, or do we just stand there? This has to come into play. You can run twice in this year. We could run in November. This is where we need direction from you. Which we're gonna go. Yeah. If you run in November, we lose. We work a swing, I mean, we're a swing partner and we're gonna, you told us to run in November twenty-twenty-four, we're gonna get everything we have. And we're gonna do everything we possibly can to pass. And if we do, fantastic, because the need is there. There's a lot of trust right down the district that has what's shown by this last levy that we just passed, over sixty percent. There's great momentum. A voter has been a turnout in the presidential election. Well. So this is a, this is a tough decision to make, it's a tough direction to coin us in, either way. We can go in November, we can go in February. There are risks, it would go. Um. But this is the discussion we need to have, and we'll leave this up so you can see it as a visual. Any questions about the salary connect? So, thank you for doing that.
Oh, yeah.
We've had questions about validation and how that all works, and that's really their vision.
It kind of does give you an idea of like, every time.
Right, and I, um, just so you know, I had those numbers validated by three different people. And then once on the very end, they're approximate, because again, you don't know what's gonna happen, and I provided you with information from our consultant on election analysis, um. You just don't, it's like you don't have a crystal ball. And you don't know what type of voters are gonna turn out. They have, everybody has ideas and opinions. Um, but really, this is when as a board um, we think about what we've done, what we've studied, what we've researched, what you know about community. What do we do? Because again, there are pros and cons to both. And we we will do whatever the board um, decides in terms of direction. Hmm. If you told us, hey, you might want to head in the direction of November twenty-twenty-four, the clock is ticking for us because it's like there's a lot of work that needs to be done preparing resolutions, by the county, all the yes, no committees again. Appreciate Bill, you being here, the chair of our citizens group. And then if you say, hey, why don't you wait, hold up till February? You know, we just passed two levies, people are gonna be confused, and there are all sorts of questions, so, yeah.
I'll start.
Sure.
Don't mind me have to speak in.
No, you're not watching you.
So, uh, I read what the consultant provided, and didn't really say much to the other, and then, you know, I kind of thought the same thing. Uh. And I was really leaning towards uh, not doing a November election and waiting until February. Until you just put that up on the board. Twelve thousand four hundred votes is a huge hurdle uh, at any time, whether it's February or April, uh, next year. I got, validation, I don't think is an issue here in November.
Oh, right.
But it is gonna be a grueling slog between a governor and a presidential election. Um. And I, I'm, I suspect we'd have a tough time getting to sixty percent. I don't have a crystal ball, but I suspect it. Uh, however, that's why I thought, I think February would be better. But at twelve thousand four hundred, I'm ready to roll the dice in November, um. I don't think we would, honest, honestly, at twelve thousand four hundred, I didn't think we'd validate all next year. We'd almost have to wait another year uh, to, to get to a number where we could, that number would come down where we could validate. And uh, I'm not prepared to wait another year when our buildings are busting at the seams.
Yeah, thanks, Paul, I appreciate that. And I appreciate that you pointed out, doesn't matter what election it is, in twenty-twenty-five, we validate based on twenty-twenty-four.
Which, that's taller.
Not impossible.
Well, it's not possible to get sixty percent in November either, just tall order.
Right, good point, yeah. I have similar thoughts. Um, there, there were some pros to waiting and giving some space between the last election and the next election. Going back out to voters and, but that, you're right, that, that's a daunting number, we, we're gonna have hurdles no matter what. Um, that we're gonna need to address, but that, that's a big one. Um. And so maybe not having that one to focus on first, working on communication, under, you know, education, understanding why we need to run this, why we need to run this now. Um, and focusing on that message might be a good thing, and not having to worry about the twelve thousand plus.
Yeah, I, honestly, that is such a huge number, twelve thousand four hundred. Uh, that we don't think we could remotely have a chance of passing it in November. But the only other option would be of waiting an entire year, uh, actually, warranted here, uh, would be February of two thousand twenty-six, uh. I, I just, I don't think I can, not in my good conscience could I do that.
Not looking at this chart, right?
Right.
Because all this.
Yeah. The numbers are just gonna get bigger.
Yeah.
Right, and so, um.
Cause there's still coming.
And I, I think, right. I, I, my sense is that we just go for it for November, uh, it wasn't my initial thought, when you put that number on the board, uh, that's a, that's jaw-dropping, twelve thousand four hundred people to validate. Where we generally get about ten thousand, ten thousand five hundred, maybe. Uh, I think validating all next year would be almost impossible. I think it'd be easier probably to get to the sixty percent uh, in a general election than it would be to validate next year. Uh, but that requires a really good communication plan uh, from Bill. Uh, and really good.
Hopefully so.
Really good gap showing the need, because there's gonna be so much nasty noise in this upcoming general election, um.
That's so great. I appreciate listening to you too, um, experience. Um, and you, you know, I'm looking at that and I agree that the twelve thousand four hundred jumps out, and I know how much people put blood, sweat, and tears in to get to the ten thousand. So that validation. The other thing is, I know it's a lot of work by a lot of people in a short amount of time, but then, let's just say it doesn't pass, which is not unheard of in bonds.
Right.
Much more bonds than levies.
Oh, sure.
Then we could come back uh, for that second run, because the, the bottom line is, I don't know what, I don't know what you folks, I don't know what we're gonna do if we can't get going on some of these things.
Right.
I mean, the bodies are there and they're coming fast and furious, so, um. To be upfront, I was kind of leaning the other way, but listening, Paul, thank you, and uh, I think I think it's very daunting, but jumping into it and then having that second shot. You know, and one of the things that's gonna happen too, you kick this can down the road, logging up, those prices are just gonna go up. They're not, they're not coming down, that's not.
All right, if you waited till February twenty-six, you might as well add, and I, I mean, I don't know how much to that seven-hundred-and-thirty-two million, but enough.
Close to the end of the year.
Yeah. You, you're not kidding, I mean, the way rate of inflation, especially replay, inflation-related construction.
Yeah.
That's right.
Laurie, you asked us about, you know, the, the projects that you have, and one, I think the committee did a tremendous job, and I don't second-guess anything they did, because I know they were in way deeper. But one of the things I so appreciate about the district is all the years that I've been associated with it, is when we look at bonds, when we look at those type of things, it's always looking out through the whole district. And uh, having friends in other districts, where it's like that one target, we're doing this one building, that's all we can afford to do. I really appreciate looking at this uh, proposal is, once again, it's, what, what are the needs, there's no plot, what are the needs? And how is this benefiting the whole district? And I appreciate that greatly, and uh, I think that's one of the reasons we don't have dilapidated buildings like some districts do.
Yeah.
Uh, we're able to keep up. Um, unfortunately. We probably needed one sooner. But, you know, there you go.
And Bill, there is no plot, uh, two of the projects account for over six hundred million dollars. The rest of it, to get it up to over, you know, the, the rest of it's small, uh, in comparison, but they're needed projects, um. There's, I, I, there's just no way around it, um, and I think a good education pro, uh, plan. Uh, honestly, I think November's the best shot, uh, unless we wish to know. February twenty-six, which is not something uh, I'm prepared to do, uh, but I came down here thinking, prepared to argue February uh, twenty-twenty-five, uh, but not anymore.
Well, the committee really had to make some tough decisions. Aaron, I think you were at one of the sausage-making meetings, where it, it felt like making sausage. We were like, oh boy, this is gonna take a lot longer than we thought, um, because they had some tough conversations with each other and I mean, they took things off of the package that, that some people really wanted, and, but then they realized that maybe it's a want, not a need. So I appreciate the conversations and how deep they went into putting this package together.
And, you know, when we talk about education, I think, Marina, I was, I was darn excited, having been up at Lake Bridge a number of times in my past life. Trying to explain to parents and get them off the road and stuff. But I also know how much work was done to move the water that we know of, and every time, every, like the football field is, example, great plan, great works. But then a year and a half later, and you do have a gravel pit across the road, so who knows how that impacts things, and you've got the topography. We had a whole nother river somewhere that we were fighting. So I think being able to educate people on why we didn't do some things, maybe just as important as why we'd do some things.
I agree, um. And when I think about construction as a whole, stormwater is the number one concern that I have above and beyond every other concern when it comes to a project. Um, you, it's the hardest thing to control and it has the biggest impact. And so, uh, you have to be very certain, that's one of the reasons why, you know, the uh, the master plan and that development agreement is so valuable, because all of those pieces related to stormwater but beyond that, the expectations of the city and what we need to do in order to build that are certain. And so while we have that certainty, that helps us be certain on a cost as well. And uh, you know, the master plan is a very complicated project that involves sophisticated staging and phasing, and that is part of the reason why the cost is what it is, I mean, it's where we don't have magic fingers that we can snap and make happen, so you really have to work hard and do it the right way to make it work.
Give it a certain manager, share some common vibes about that stuff.
Yeah, think about it, Bill, I mean, Barry Urbach was a critical part of the, of the, it's like the story. It is, um, and for her to have negotiated that is, that's an amazing opportunity for us.
You know, and just because Bonnie Lakes on the hill, it doesn't mean that it doesn't have very complex water problems to, to, to overcome. You know, we've done a lot of work studying that as well, and, and working on the structures that we already have on the site, so it's, it's a uniform problem wherever we go.
Next thing, it's three years to get to here, right, like twenty-twenty-one to now, there's been a lot of thought and research that's gone into all of this. That's what I would say too, and just witnessing a few of those meetings, just the experts that were there in the room and could weigh in on things that I had no idea about really, and then depth, that they were able to explore some of these um, topics, and the committee members who were there that would take things home and, and bore over, you know, the, the information, and they had come back and asked really thoughtful questions, and I was so impressed with that team of people, um, just as an observer and listening, that um, they really feel confident about the plan in front of us. Um, and now more confident, I mean, I don't know if it's appropriate to ask, I mean, obviously, you guys have spent a lot of time in conversation about timing, is it appropriate to ask where your conversations have led as well, or? Yeah, I mean, so this is where we're at, I mean, we're ready.
I guess that's my question.
Yeah.
In my own language.
If you tell us to do nothing, we will stand down and put together a new Capitol Facility Plan that will be submitted to the county, and it will be beautiful and, um, you know, uh, well-bedded, we're probably good, one of the like most researched Capitol Facility Plans out there, uh. But we would do nothing, but if you tell us, hey, let's try this out in November, well, Ben and I will probably meet uh, tomorrow, and and start working with our bond council to draft a resolution that we would bring you well, I'm not sure next week, but um, in June for first readings. Because we have to file with the county by, I don't know, I think maybe August, I don't have them totally memorized yet, but, but then if you say, hey, wait till February. We're okay there too, I mean, it's really, we're at the point now where we just need for you to tell us which way to turn the car.
For November.
Right.
I think, yeah. Next year's, my opinion, next to impossible. Um, I think a better chance to get sixty percent November, as unlikely as I think, to be honest.
But we're gonna try.
It's tall, well.
Our hardest, right, we don't like to lose.
I know. I know you guys are fighters.
I mean, you know.
Everything, uh, educate the public.
It'd be worse to, what, like, get sixty-one percent and then. I'd be in a fetal position crying, it would, it would be a pretty sight, um. But yeah.
Just to build up, there are a lot of really good things happening right now in this district, and so you know, trusting, trusting that work and trusting our community with that information, I think is gonna be really important, getting that information out there so that they can make an informed decision, but then trusting them with that is, um, something that we need to do too.
We met with our current leadership council this morning, Merely facilitates that, and they're excited, they're like, when, when is it gonna happen? And it's like, well, hey, if you're not doing anything, it's, it's a fun. Five? Oh, they get, yeah, what was a five again?
One was, I'm interested in when this, one was like, not very interested in five was, we're all four of us.
Yeah. And those are the people that can move mountains.
Cause it affects them, right? This, this plan is going to affect a lot of people in a positive way, so hopefully getting to see them and see that. One of the things about this process, I mean, you mentioned the people that were involved, and, you know, those people are all over our community.
Yeah.
Uh, but the ripples are deeper than that, and I've just seen a great deal of support both in, you know, the school construction community that lives in our district um, and from the parents and families and, and the people that participate in that process, and I think we have champions in all of them. So, um, you know, hopefully, approaching this in the way that we've been doing recently, you know, with the, with the group, the led by Bill, and, and just the energy that we've got going. You know, I think it's more, more possible to move mountains now than it was five years ago.
Uh, no, he couldn't try this. I didn't know, excuse him, but it was being. So here's what I'm hearing. Um, the direction you're comfortable with us heading right now. Not making a decision because you don't have a resolution, we don't have anything for you to vote on, is let's give November a try for the total patch. Okay?
And the oxygen leaks the room. We're ready to go. That was a deep breath, let's go.
Yeah, get out your piggy dings.
This is exciting.
Oh, my gosh, I know.
Fun, with a lot of really great work in it, that's gonna make a big difference for our community, this is exciting.
And again, I just appreciate your involvement, but you came to the meetings, that you saw how messy it got. And again, I just appreciate your involvement, but you came to the meetings that you saw how messy it got. Um, that in twenty twenty one, you approved hiring that, let Marina work with that, they've done the needs assessment, that we've done the work. And now we're ready to roll our sleeves and get this done. It'll be historic, for sure.
Yeah, for sure.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Everybody, deep breath.
Hey, everybody.
Okay, um, let's just take like two minutes to transition. Um, we're gonna move, um, from that, uh, topic to, um, candidate interviews. Um, where we will interview a potential candidate for District One Board of Director vacant position. So.
Exciting thing.
Another exciting thing, exactly. So let's just do like three minutes to like. Ship.
And they're there.
Um, Kevin is unable to join us, so we wanna make sure that he's excused officially from this meeting. Um, and we also want to welcome, um, JB Smith.
Thank you for getting us.
Thank you so much.
Um, you're here tonight, um, to interview for, um, the vacant, uh, director one position that was vacated by Devin Morris. Um, last month, March, March, yeah, March, recently, yeah. Uh, so thank you for, um, applying, um, you've included your application and all your, um, requirements online. Um, we have, um, a few questions, um, this interview now will last about thirty minutes. Um, you also have a copy of, uh, the questions in front of you, however, if you need a question repeated, feel free to ask again. Um, I know it's never easy to be on the spot like this, so thank you for, for doing this, we appreciate it, we'll try to make it as painless as possible.
Thank you.
Um, during the interview, our community will be taking, our committee will be taking notes and it may, um, impact, I want to, but we are listening, so.
Thank you.
All right, um, I'm gonna go ahead and ask the first question, um, and then we'll just kind of, um, go one at a time, ask our questions. First question, um, what is the board member's role in fulfilling our promise to know, value and support every student? Helping them graduate with a promising future.
All right, that's a wonderful question, um, and it's a wonderful, so. I, you know, when I think about that question and when I think about, um, what the board, and again, I have experience on the board, so, uh. I'm sure there will be learnings for me, but when I think about that question, what I think about is that it's really about, um, focusing on the kids, right? Putting them at the center, and it's about connecting, um, connecting families, communities, our educators. Um, with our goals, and, um, and I think that a big part of that comes from learning, listening. Um, and getting out in the community, getting in the classrooms when appropriate and, and, um. And seeing firsthand, um, I, my experience, when I first was, you know, thought about this role, I started attending these meetings. And it is amazing that the more you get involved. The more impressed you are with the people and the thoughtfulness, I had an opportunity to speak to some of the board members, I really wanted to know. Am I ready for this, um, am I ready to commit to this? And the level of commitment from everybody involved and the level of thoughtfulness, um, and the listening, um, was. Just made me actually really excited about the opportunity, because I think you just, you hear a lot of negativity. And when you actually are engaging and involving, you, and being involved, you realize that there's so much positive work being done. And that's something I wanna be a part of, and our promise that we have here is something I'd be really proud to support.
Thank you. Superhero costumes too, right?
Yes.
Superhero costume always help.
Um, Kevin isn't here, so I'll go ahead and, um, read the next question. Give an example of a time where you entered a situation with your mind made up, but upon gaining more perspective, you changed your mind.
This is a great question, this is a hard question, um. I think that the first thing that popped into my mind was my daughter wanting, um, social media. And, um, and me being very much against her getting social media. And, um, and I don't know why it popped in my mind, but I figured I might as well use it, um, and so we. Made her do a PowerPoint presentation as to why she should have social media. And she was a procrastinator, so I thought for sure that that would buy me time, that I wouldn't have to deal with the actual issue. Um, but she ended up putting together such a thoughtful and considerate PowerPoint presentation on why she should do it. She actually put more barriers in her own way and access, you know, permission to me than I ever probably would have asked for in the first place. So, um, yeah, I think, you know, really what that still was is, or, you know, really what matters is coming with an open mind. Providing an opportunity for people to put their thoughts and listening to those thoughts with, um, without, um. With as much of, of interest as possible and asking questions and, um, and learning, being ready to learn. I think if we stop learning, then we, we can't change our mind, we're ready to learn. Thank you.
Hi JB.
My mom.
All right, describe a time where your view of an issue differed from the majority of others, and how did you navigate?
Um, so, this is another great question, and certainly one that I imagine that the board deals with on a regular basis. Um, I, so, what comes to mind for me is, um, with work, and I work for a company called Genempec. And we're a biotech company, and at one point I was working, um, with a kind of a work product group, and we were, we were looking to, um. Uh, there was a new product that was coming out, and how were we gonna to prepare for that product? And one of the, um, the groups that, that, you know, one of the ideas was that we would bring in a contract sales force. I was part of, I was a sales force, you know, representative on that team, so that was something that, um, I was not in favor of. Um, I felt that the current sales force, uh, was capable of taking on the additional responsibilities. Uh, I feel like there's a lot of downsizing in the industry, and so bringing in a contract sales force was risking some of the current positions. And I felt very, very strongly about that, uh, and I was so, like, an approach was, um, was really to. Clearly, you know, articulate as, as much as possible what my concerns were, um, to look for supporting. You know, supporting castes to also, you know, represent that point of view, ultimately, I didn't convince them. Things, and so at some point, it's also time to say, I think my argument, I made it as fair as I could. Um, the majority decided to go in a different direction, and you accept that, and then you look at how can you make that the best possible. So you gotta get on board with that decision, and how do we make that decision, um, fit and, and be as effective as possible? It's kind of my approach there. I think that's, I think that's the most important, you don't always win everything, but when you don't win, you know, how do you, how do you be still a champion for the direction you're going?
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi.
As a board member, how do you assist parents who are having trouble navigating the school system?
I would assume I would probably do that just as I would as another community member, um, that might be involved. You know, hopefully I'd be a little more, um, aware of the resources available for those community members, that, you know, those families as a community, as a board member. But, um, I would try to understand what they needed. And truly, you know, take time to understand those needs, and then to connect them with the resources that would be most appropriate for them. And then to hopefully have the relationship that I can follow through and make sure that there is a, that, that. What I was setting them up with was the right resource that they got what they ultimately needed, so. That the end result was successful, or if it wasn't, that, you know, we look for an, another solution. There's a lot of that where you think there's something, the right person or the right situation, and you have to then, um. Continue to stay engaged so that you can pivot if, and, and, you know, make adjustments, that's.
We need to do it the other fifty nine times.
Don't be so slow. No.
You're, you're absolutely, I mean, when I get interviews, teachers and administrators and stuff, sometimes they go forever, and sometimes it's a perfect answer, so okay, we're done.
There we go. So is there anything you wish to add that would help us understand why you would be the best candidate for this, this position, or do you have any questions?
Um, I mean, I just wanna add that, you know, I, I think I am very, very excited about this opportunity. I've lived in summer, you know, the majority of my, um, I love this community. I very much would feel privileged to be able to give back in some way. Um, and I think, you know, I feel very connected, my kids graduated, I graduated from here, I won't say the year. It was a long time ago, um, you know, my brother graduated from here, my kids graduated. And, um, it's been over four years, my youngest is gonna graduate from Seattle U this June, and, um. I still follow the school district on social media, I still, because to me, I don't know any of the kids anymore, but I, again, it's that positive thing. You see kids doing good and thriving, and I love that, I wanna be part of that, so, in some way. And, uh, so I just wanted to share that with you, right? Um, I am super excited about this project, it sounds like there's really a lot that needs to be done, so. Um, yeah. Um, do you have any questions?
No.
Um, they, I'm sure they'll come.
They'll come, I have so many questions.
I mean, I have lots of questions about, but, you know, I, I do feel like I had an opportunity to ask, well, you know, many of you, a lot of questions already, and get a lot of those answers. Feel a lot more prepared for, you know, hopefully the opportunity to serve.
Well, and to your credit, you've been a familiar face here the last few months too, and, um. Learning and listening is, as we've held, held meetings, you've been around, so.
It's been, I'm sure it's really insightful and, and definitely, um, and I'm so glad I did it, because I felt like I had a much better understanding of, you know. What it all is that, that you are dealing with, I've seen superhero costumes, I've seen.
Difficult conversations, I've seen, you know, a lot of things, so it's been, um, yeah, it's been a really good, good experience.
Awesome, any other question?
JB.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time and your answers.
That fullness. Thank you, I'm looking forward to hearing from you.
Yes, thank you.
Um, this ends the, kind of, interview.
Thanks.
And we move into board discussion.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Any discussion?
Not a discussion. I, lots going on, I apologize for not making some of them, um.
You've been assistant photographer.
Assistant photographer, kidney stone, team member, family, and all that kind of stuff, so, no, I. You know, the, the one thing my wife and I were talking is, um. How many great things go on, and unfortunately, I got cornered by a neighbor this morning who realizes I was a board member, wanted to share things. And at the end of listening, I thanked her that, and I said, but how many great things are happening, you're sending up to school? And that was a whole nother long conversation, and my wife was mad because I was supposed to go do some more, but, uh, I think sometimes we just have to do really. Work hard to share all the great things. And I think sometimes the little tiny, really minuscule things overwhelm, you know, overwhelm us, and it's sad to me, but there are so many great things going on. So many places, and, and it's fun to see.
We are entering the season of celebrations, yes, May and June, must celebrate.
Lots of great stuff to celebrate, and.
On a board member and personal level.
Yeah.
Yeah, trying to be that deck ready for celebration.
Yeah. Important things.
Big task.
Yeah. It's good stuff.
I'm missing out on some of the other celebrations I've been able to partake in, uh, in the past years, so. Yeah.
Different seasons.
Well, it's kind of frustrating for me, because I know, I, I would recognize most of the kids getting a war. All right, but I, I've got one kid that I need to.
Yeah.
Make sure has a special class.
Sure, good. All right, and has that one kid made a decision yet?
Yeah, yeah, she's gonna go to the U-Dub.
Okay.
And, uh, she got a national, uh, ROTC scholarship for the Navy.
Oh, all right.
You know, she's been exercising and getting in shape, because she'll be off to the naval station at the Great Lakes Naval Station. So we're gonna turn our thirtieth anniversary in, uh, we're gonna go to her graduation in, uh. And she, we're gonna go to Chicago, but it's, the naval base is about an hour north of Chicago, so we'll get around the car and go up there.
Wow.
And the, and the, and our thirtieth anniversary with that celebration, so that'll be a full summer.
It's exciting.
We're packing up hotels in Napa.
Oh, yeah, that's right, you still have the senior granddaughter.
Yeah. And the other one, and then you.
Mm-hmm.
She said, superintendent.
I've been to a ball.
Good stuff. All right, well, anything else? I think we can move on, uh, we're gonna move into executive session, uh, at this time, the board is gonna evaluate qualifications of a candidate for appointment. Uh, no action is expected after the session, um, and final action of appointing a candidate to elected, the office, to elected. To elected the office will be in a meeting open to the public. That make sense to you?
Hmm, no.
You understand. You understand, um, I think fifteen minutes, I mean, I was really in line. Okay.
Be a mom.
Okay. All right. Thank you, go enjoy the sunshine this evening.